We'll call the meeting to order. First item is invocation by Pastor Don Tejim on Mountain Valley Church.
Love and heavenly Father, we come before you. And we don't do that with a big ego. Instead, Lord God, we do that very humbly. Because you are a God who knows all things, rules all things, whose power is unmatched. We thank you that you love us enough to allow us to live in such a wonderful community. And we thank you, Father, for those that serve on this governmental board, to regulate the activities of this town, to oversee its financial wealth. We thank you for the blessings that you have hidden in this area that we, as a people, have discovered and enjoy. And in light of what happened today with the DPS officer, Lord God, we beseech your hand of care upon our responders that are out there for our people to bring safety and protection. Keep them safe in your very capable hands. Now, Lord, give this council the wisdom that they need, wisdom that's even beyond their own. And we thank you for the workers of Prescott Valley, their dedication to this town. May we continue to be a blessing to you as you bless us in your wonderful, holy name, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We'll be letting a pledge by Lieutenant Gregory.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and next, Diane, roll call.
Mayor Skug?
President?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
Still here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Nye?
Glad to be here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, number five, recognition award, Kinder Morgan, and this is an amended item. Diane, you ever... Norm, you got any comments?
Yeah, did if I could get it started, Mayor. I think, Mayor and Council, you're aware that we've been endeavoring to put a multi-use path along the Kinder Morgan pipeline for a number of years now. Good partnership with not only Kinder Morgan, but the funding source with the Federal Highway Transportation Enhancement Fund, in addition to ADOT administering the project for us. So what we want to do tonight was really recognize all the hard effort back... It's actually been a long-term project. Back in 1991, Kinder Morgan did grant a multi-use pathway as a shared use of their particular easement. It does go right through the middle of town, so it's really have limited access. It's a wonderful amenity in order to have them grant that access. So what we wanted to do was give them a recognition for, and basically free of charge, to allow that use. So they worked really hard with a design because multi-use path means ADA accessible. That's really a much tougher design, and to accommodate that design. So Kinder Morgan's been a great partner and allowing us, free of charge, the right-of-way, in addition to working very hard with us to meet our vision of a multi-use path through the core of the town for two miles. So with that, I guess if Diane could... or any more comments, the recognition award.
Diane, you want to read that?
Yes, Mayor. This is presented to Kinder Morgan, January 12, 2017. The town of Prescott Valley is proud to recognize and express our appreciation to Kinder Morgan for their cooperation and work towards realizing the vision for shared use of the 60-foot-wide Kinder Morgan gas easement crossing north-south through the town to accommodate a multi-use path. The vision of a multi-use path connecting throughout the town started through an easement granted in 1991 for the gas line facility installed in the 1950s. The 60-foot-wide north-southeastement presented an excellent opportunity for shared use of this corridor. Funding to construct the multi-use path was realized through four federal transportation enhancement grants obtained in 2006, 2007, 2008, and 2009 totaling approximately $2 million. Design of the multi-use path was closely coordinated with Kinder Morgan to meet safety guidelines for the gas facility and also accommodate the multi-use path criteria for full ADA accessibility. Construction of the multi-use path began in May 2016 and was completed in January of 2017. Through the generosity of Kinder Morgan, by allowing shared use of the corridor with their gas facility, the two miles of PV pipeline multi-use path provides connectivity with the central core multi-use path to the south and Powers Avenue, multi-use path to the north totaling nine miles of continuous connectivity for access to schools, parks, government services, and shopping. On behalf of all of the citizens of Prescott Valley, I, Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby recognize by this award our deep gratitude for the cooperative efforts of Kinder Morgan to make the multi-use path project a reality. We thank you most graciously.
Thank you, Diane. Vice Mayor, any comments?
It's really hard to add anything to that. The recognition award pretty much says it all. It's, you know, it's not often we have a partnership like we have with them. And it's really, we appreciate it. We certainly do.
No, I understand there's no one from Kinder Morgan here tonight. So what I'd like to do, Norm, is give you this. Can you get it forwarded to them?
Absolutely, Mayor. And you did mention they're here tonight, but they are going to be here Wednesday. And on the overhead, you do see we're going to have our ribbon-cutting ceremony on Wednesday at 2:00 o'clock out on site. So Kinder Morgan does plan... They're actually flying people out from, I believe, Houston or Albuquerque. A real big deal for them because this type of amenity, I think, can serve as a model in all their facility uses as what you can co-use their existing gas easements also with the transmission or the transportation capability of a multi-use path. So we'll be able to present this to them, and we plan to in the ceremony if Mayor and Council plans to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony. So that will take place on Wednesday. The other thing I did want to note, typically when we open a new facility like this, we like to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony. This was a little different. Typically, when we open a roadway, we're standing in the road and PD has to stop traffic. Well, good news about this is a multi-use path that's non-vehicular. We'll be able to actually cut the ribbon without dodging the cars. So we'll do that on Wednesday, and we'll cut a ribbon and welcome this new amenity as another transportation facility here in Prescott Valley.
And Norm, where on the trail are you going to be cutting that ribbon?
It's actually off of Manley. So it, as it shows in the flyer, yes, it'll be off of Manley. We've got a nice little pole out there. And one of the better parts of the trail that shows one of the most challenging parts of the ADA accessibility, so it's a really good sight.
And you'll take that to them, and we'll be there too, I'm sure they'll call us.
Okay, I can present it on Wednesday too. Be happy to.
Thank you so much, Norm. Appreciate that. Okay, next item, lifesaving award, Officer Omar Hernandez. Gregory?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The lifesaving award is awarded to recognize the actions of the department personnel that result in the savings or preservation of human life that otherwise would not have been lost without the employees' direct involvement. On October 30, 2016, at approximately 03:20 hours, officers were dispatched to an address on Tanny Road for a report of a male subject down who was unconscious and not breathing. Officer Omar Hernandez arrived on scene and began CPR on the victim until medical personnel arrived on scene. Once the fire department arrived on scene, they were able to revive the victim with the administration of Narcan. He was able... He was then transported to the Yavapai Regional Medical Center East Campus. Officer Hernandez's quick, decisive actions played a vital role in the victim surviving this incident. Further investigation revealed evidence suggesting that the victim, in this case, had just used heroin in the bathroom prior to collapsing. According to fire department personnel who responded to this car call, Officer Omar did an excellent job on the CPR, which contributed to the saving of the victim's life. The actions by Officer Omar Hernandez warrant the awarding of the Prescott Valley Police Department's lifesaving ribbon. And here's my citation. Congratulations.
Counsel, have any comments? Laura?
I'd like to say I'm surprised, but we're not, are we? This is the level of training. This is the level of caring. And it's a high level of giving back to the community that we know will come from our department members. And we honor you and we respect you. And we most humbly thank you on behalf of the family and the individual.
Thank you, Laura. Mike?
Yeah, I think it's surprising. A lot of us think that something like this will never happen or happen to us, or we're confronted with a situation like that. And thank God for our officers in the field who have that training or willing to step up. And it's truly heroism, I think, that you can save a life. It'll be with you for the rest of your life. So we appreciate that and thank you for your service.
Vice Mayor?
I want to thank you so much for being part of the Prescott Valley family. You honor us by being part of our family, and we do appreciate your being with us. Thank you.
Mary?
As always, my heart is indebted to you and to all the department. As I watch them back there, I just, words don't say enough how much I care and support our first responders. Because without you, I don't believe that we are safe. Thank you. God bless you and your family.
Thank you, Mary. Marty?
Yeah, congratulations on receiving this award. This is just another example of our police department where they're just not out there writing tickets, making arrests. They are actually out there to protect and serve. And being able to be in the right place at the right time and have the experience and knowledge to administer CPR and first aid is a great compliment to not only Officer Hernandez, but to the whole department. Because I know this is where the training goes, and it shows well when they're able to utilize it and save a life. I think that's remarkable that they're able to do it. And I hope the person that you saved appreciates what you've done for them. So thank you for your work and your service.
Thank you. And I think Marty says, they all say a lot. You exemplify the Prescott Valley Police Department. What an example. Thank you so much. And now your comments. Now your comments. 20 minutes.
I just want to say I'm thankful for the chance to serve for the people of Prescott Valley.
You lift the microphone up just a little.
I'm just grateful to have a chance to serve the people in Prescott Valley. And for all the training I got at NARDA, so...
We're grateful to have you, believe me. It's a good police department. Officers, you're one of the greatest. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again, and congratulations. We appreciate that. Chamber of Commerce, Marty, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. It is my pleasure to introduce one of our very wonderful local business owners here in Prescott Valley, Bob Myers, and he's with Northern Arizona Woodworking.
Well, welcome. Good to see you.
Mayor, Councilmembers, yeah, we've been there going on 23 years now. Local cabinet shop and proud to be a member of the community. Never had a complaint with the register, proud to say. I've always provided product for everybody locally. We're up to about 32 employees back in '07, before '08, obviously changed everybody's life, construction-wise. 21 guys going these days. Again, custom kitchen cabinets, granite countertops, all that stuff, new construction, remodel work, et cetera. To be perfectly honest, not sure what I'm supposed to say up here, but... How to get ahold of me? Oh, it's kind of a commercial, too, huh? 772-3779 is our phone number. We're right here in the back of Prescott Valley, same as we've always been, on Laredo Drive, 8875 East Laredo. As a matter of fact, I just redid the showroom this year, threw some money in that. It looks real nice. I welcome any of you that would like to come by and see us. It'd be great to see us stop by. Very back, very back of Prescott Valley, back there by the field, so I think that's it. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate that. Good comments. Anything else, Marty?
No, that's just a reminder, we're having our quarterly breakfast on January the 24th. We're at about 120 at 10Ds right now, and Stone Ridge holds about 150, I think. But it's all about economic development in Prescott Valley. The theme is Prescott Valley Economic Development. It's a team effort, and so our speakers include a variety of folks here, not only yourself, Mayor, myself, Mike Perettis, Ben Hooper, Richard Parker, and Sanford Cohen. So it'll be a very informative breakfast, and there's still opportunity to attend. They can call the chamber at 772-8857.
Don't we have some new news about Prescott Valley Days that you'd like to share?
We're still working on that, but yes, actually. This is a work in progress. We found out that we have... There was a conflict from the day that we chose in April. After the success of last year, whether, not the weather so much, but the fact that we'd hold Prescott Valley Days while school is still in session. It's an opportunity for our young people to really be involved before people go on vacation. And we had scheduled it for the last weekend in April. We found recently that the PBR Bull Riding, which uses a lot of the same resources we do, is going to be holding their event at the Event Center that weekend. So we've moved it to the second weekend in May, firm forever, as long as I'm here, on the second weekend in May, which we feel is a better time anyway because the weather usually is better at that time. We know it's Mother's Day weekend, Sunday, but Sunday tends to be just the carnival day anyways. I figured mothers would probably want Dad to take the kids to the carnival, and they can just have their own Mother's Day in peace and quiet. So we figured that might work. So it'll be a Thursday-through-Sunday event, and we're having a meeting to detail some of the fine-tune details. But it'll be carnival and entertainment and a lot of new things that we're bringing to it, bringing, creating a downtown destination for Prescott Valley Days for a lot of people throughout our community. So it's going to be a lot of fun.
Well, thank you, Marty. Appreciate that.
So mark that on your calendar. It's the second weekend, I think it's 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th. Right, it's four days, over four days.
Good, thank you, Marty.
Anything else?
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Any other news?
I do, Harvey.
Oh, I always have news. No, I... No, I don't have any other news.
Yeah, Laura?
Our town manager shared something with us a little while ago that I'd like him to share with us now. I think it's very appropriate since we honored one of our police officers.
Just before coming over here, I'd received an email talking about the town of Prescott Valley being the fifth safest community in mid-range cities in the state of Arizona. I'm not entirely familiar with this rating agency, and then I'm going to do some more research on this. But this is very consistent with all of the other studies that have come out or ratings, giving Prescott Valley extremely high marks for being a safe community. And we'll end up putting out a press release on it once we have fully digested the agency, the basis on which they've made this rating, and all the details, and that'll be coming out tomorrow. But once again, we are a very safe community. And don't take our word for it. Listen to the people that do these ratings.
Ask others. And again, as in economic development, as in the community, and equality community, sustainable community, it's a team effort and everybody working together. We have the most amazing group that works together every single day, supporting one another to make this community better. So it's, I'm proud to be a part of it. So thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Okay, next we'll move on. Are there any other comments or communications, anyone? If not, we'll move on then to number eight, which is our consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine. By town council, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion would be desired on a specific item, it'd be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. This include the approval of the December 15, 2016 council minutes. B is approving the Arizona Public Entity Pool Member Patrol Confidential User Agreement with Berkeley Risk Southwest Risk Services, giving access to claims data on the Action Center Member Portal. C is approving an interim permit and person transfer for a Series 9 liquor license to TBR Holdings LLC Liquor Bar located at 7655 East Florentine Suite A, Alpha B Ware applicant. D is approving interim permit and person transfer for a Series 7 beer and wine license to TBR Holding LLC Liquor Bar located at 7655 East Florentine, again, Alpha B Ware applicant. E is approving the Upper Verde River Partnership Coalition's permission, proposal to apply for the USDA Wood Innovations Grant, up to $200,000, and the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation Cooperative Watershed Management Program, Phase 2 grant for up to $100,000, a total of $300,000. F is approving contract number STWSG 150101517Y3 with the Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family to accept a grant award in an amount of $206,465, requiring a 25% non-federal match of $68,000 for the town. Are there any comments or anyone want to pull an item for discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve all items listed on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane? Okay, mine didn't do it, Diane.
Okay, I'll check with yours and Mayor. Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor, would you like to vote yes or no on that?
Yes, on that one.
Okay, that would be unanimous then, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to number 9A, consideration of reappointing Al Wood to the Board of Adjustments to a term with a renewal date of January 31, 2020. Comments, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I do. There we go. On January 31, 2017, Al Wood's term on the Board of Adjustment will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter, choosing to be reappointed. Al Wood was first appointed to a partial term on this board on March 20, 2015, and this reappointment will be his second consecutive term. Myself, Councilmembers Mary Mallory and Laura Lee Nye are recommending the reappointment of Al Wood for a term with a renewal date of January 31, 2020.
More? Laura, you got any comments?
Well, it's always, we have a hard time coming up with new ways to express our appreciation. I think the most important thing to say, this community is absolutely blessed with outstanding citizens who step forward to serve their community. What greater blessing could we have as council members? And I just want to thank all who stepped forward in today, in this moment, particularly Mr. Wood. Woods.
Okay, Mary, you have any comments or motions? Is Mr. Wood here? I'm not seeing him. Okay, Mary, any comments, motions?
No, Mayor, I just appreciate his service and willing to serve again. Motion to reappoint Al Wood to the Board of Adjustments to a term with a renewal date of January 31, 2020.
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to number 9B, consideration of reappointing Linda Schuman to the Board of Adjustments for a term of, a term with a renewal date, again, of January 31, 2020. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Yes, I certainly do. On January 31, 2017, Linda Schuman's term on the Board of Adjustment will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter, choosing to be reappointed. Linda Schuman was first appointed to a partial term on this board on July 27, 2006, and this reappointment will be her fifth consecutive term. Thank you, Linda.
Mary, any comments?
Well, I always appreciate her service. She is very active in our community, and we appreciate her willingness to serve again. Thank you so much. She is in the audience, Mayor.
Laura, any comment?
Not until she comes up here and we can recognize her. Come on up. Now, we're looking at our paperwork, and a lot of people are wondering, who the heck is Linda? Because, because we know her as Bear.
Yes, we do.
And she's the epitome of everything I said about Mr. Woods. She serves our community in so many diverse ways. And I know in my heart that if I needed something for the town, I could call Bear, and she'd say, "You bet." And she'd probably bring along a couple of helpers.
She probably knows who we're talking about.
So let's hear from you, Bear, why you're willing to serve.
It's a privilege to live here. It was a gift to be born a citizen of the United States of America. It was through the good grace and sound judgment of Ellen Babbitt that I came here in 2004. She said, "Nowhere else. You've got to come here. You've got to come here." She was right then, she's right now. I so much appreciate the ability to work with this town, in the town, with my fellow citizens. My appreciation to you all, this is a fine council, the staff, the management of this municipality, better than we ever could have hoped for. I thank you all.
I think some of the people, and you yourself probably didn't know who we were talking about when I said Linda. You're not used to that, are you, to be called Linda?
No, only my mother says that, and then it's followed by, "Go to your room."
Any other comments, motions, promotions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to reappoint Linda Bear Schuman to the Board of Adjustment to a term with a renewal date of January 31, 2020, by electronic and voice vote.
And I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Now, the big test is the vote. You're really on edge, aren't you?
Yes.
Want to set the vote, Diane?
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Congratulations.
Thank you so very much.
We always appreciate your service.
Good evening.
And you've done a lot for the community. Okay, we're going into C, consideration of authorizing. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1984, adopting and approving a final development plan plat, FDP 16-008 for Granville Unit 10A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You're looking at a final development plan for the second unit of the northwest phase of Granville. It's interesting, this is kind of a milestone. We've moved into the last portion of Granville, and this is now the second unit. Proposed is 132 lots on 65 acres. This is the extension of Tuscany, which intersects Glassford Hill Road. You're, I'm sure aware that there's considerable grading and construction going on there. The developer has elected now to bring the plat forward, and you can see by the subdivision agreement that he has posted financial assurances, so he can go to the Department of Real Estate. Coincidentally, this is about two-thirds now of the Granville project coming to you in a platted format. It was approved in 1999, had a little hiccup in the 2007, 2008, and what we know as the Great Recession, but they're going gangbusters out there right now. So those who want to reside in the community of Granville better buy their lots soon, because there's only about another 1,100 of them left to plat. One thing notable about this project is, the developer has been very mindful of making sure that he had hit the density number, which is allocated for water for this project. And that comes back to the community, because that water is returned to the aquifer through your recharge efforts, and by doing so, it makes up that additional water supply that this community will grow, as intended by the general plan 2025. So again, hats off to the developer to make sure that he fully utilizes that pre-declaration water allocation. And it seems, at least at this point in time, that their market is very strong, and they'll continue to grow into at least 2017, 2018. I didn't see Mr. Contadino in the audience, but if he's here, I'd love for him to come up and give his perspective of his growth in Granville over the course of the last year and a half. He is one of our best customers.
If he's here, he's in disguise, I don't see him either. Any questions, anyone? Laura?
I had a comment, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just felt it's, it's nice to see, because I think a lot of the developments, the way I understand it, were brought to the council in that same era. So all these master plan communities have come to us in the 90s, and I think there's some consideration whether or not, you know, how fast they grow. And I think this is a good example of how it takes time to build out these various developments. And it's something I think that does play a big part in our community in terms of bringing new residents, and hopefully, building new businesses. And so, I think, I'm not sure there is a development, other than the new apartment projects that we've approved, like we had back in 1998, 1999.
Well, the, the next round of subdivision development will be with post-declaration water, which will be from affluent credits that the town has amassed, that are held in private sector and available for development purposes. But yes, you're right. This project was slated initially as a 10-year build-out, so that would have been 2009, right about the time we went into the drink. So I'm really pleased to see things moving again. As you know, the, our community development department has expanded by one employee, and that's a building inspector, to try to meet the demand of the inspections every day. And as I mentioned, Granville is one of our best customers.
Laura, comment?
I would like to take this opportunity, Richard mentioned water allocation. I had an email from a citizen that had looked up our agenda, and they were very concerned that we were building homes because we were running out of water. Nada. That's a fallacy, and I want you to be comforted that we have a strong water portfolio here. We actually find ways to add to it, and he mentioned that. We recharge a lot back into our aquifer, and these lots have assured, it's 100 years assured. And so when someone says to you, "Why are you building? We're going to run out of water," you reassure them that that's not the case, and you can give them to me, and I'll be glad to calm them down and give them all of the, all of the information that will hopefully help them understand. We've been wise in this community, all of the councils before me, and this current council, and I honor them for how hard they've worked to make sure we have a strong water portfolio.
To add to it, Laura says, "All of our homes have an assured 100-year supply of water. New homes coming in cannot infringe on the, on existing homes' water supply. It's a new 100-year water supply that they have to have, and, and we're in good shape." Other comments, anyone?
No, sir.
Motions, anyone? Commotions, promotions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion, authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the Vice Mayor, to sign Resolution 1984, adopting and approving the final development plan plat, FDP 16-018 for Granville Unit 10A. I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor's? That's unanimous, Mayor.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, move on to D, consideration of approving the agreement between U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement Homeland Security Investigation of the town. Any, I don't see a police chief here to comment. Oh, there, Gregory, okay, you're up for that.
Council, this is...
Can I pull the mic close to you?
Had that problem earlier. This basically is funds, we had several investigations in the past. This one was a sex trafficking ring that resulted in numerous arrests. Department of Homeland Security came in and helped us on this investigation. This, it, for this investigation, it will reimburse the overtime, and for future investigations, it'll help us reimburse the overtime for Police Department.
Good. Any questions, anyone? Comments? I think, congratulations, we appreciate you getting those grants.
I'll make a motion.
Party?
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement between U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, Homeland Security Investigations, and the town, by electronic and voice vote.
I'll second that.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Okay, move on to E, consideration of approving an agreement with line engineering for professional design services for roadway improvements on Sunset Lane. Norm?
Yes, Mayor, Council, we did talk about this project in great length at last week's work study, but just an overall for the public is, this is a project partner with Yavapai County to widen Sunset Lane in its current two-lane configuration to a three-lane configuration with stormwater management improvements from Prescott East Highway, basically to Pine View Drive. So there will be not only public works involved, but also flood control district, and funding partnership with the county. So we're excited to move forward with this particular improvement. It will add sidewalk both sides, which enhances the pedestrian capability there, in addition to center turn lane, as you see in the exhibit, that will be added. So the current two-lane configuration, center turn lane plus pedestrian enhancements on the side, plus an underground storm drain will make this particular project much, much better for the particular area, for not only transportation, for stormwater management. So with that, happy to recommend that we award, and we've gone through the selection process, and line engineering is the most qualified local design engineer, and it's staff's recommendation to award a contract, design contract, an amount of $599,992 to get started on this project design.
Does Supervisor Smith have any comments? Nothing to add, he says.
Did he leave or still? No, there you are, Supervisor Smith.
He gave us plenty of paper on this one, just to start. Now, this is just the beginning, so.
Right, and that's, that's the actual design contracts. There's lots of tasks there, and that's what we're approving tonight, is, as we move forward through the design. And it's always important to show, there'll be a, a great amount of public involvement, not only in the design, but working with the adjacent residents to make sure that design accommodates all their wishes best we can into the design.
Good. Questions, comments, Laura?
You ready for a motion?
I think we are, yes.
Do a motion. Motion to approve the agreement with line engineering for professional design services for roadway improvements through Sunset Lane, as described therein, by electronic and voice vote.
Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
This is one we've discussed a lot, studied a lot, so, thank you, Norm. Diane, we have the motion and a second.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor.
That's, thank you. Norm, go for it.
Very good, we'll get started, thank you, Mayor.
Good job. Okay, we're going to F, interviews of council candidates with applications attached. That is going to be a tough one. We've got some of the greatest candidates. I, I don't know how we're that lucky, just super people, so. Now, there's going to be one problem with it, and that's trying to decide which one. We did get some email coaching on this, and I think that's just great. It shows the public his interest, and we appreciate that. Okay, the first one, let's see, the first one would be... Oh, Larry, maybe you want to explain, yeah?
Yeah, if I, if I could, Mr. Mayor, let me explain the format and how we're going to go forward. This evening, each of our council persons has a question that they have decided on at an earlier point in time. They will ask all candidates the same question. So, looking at it quickly, you'll see that there will be six questions asked tonight of all four candidates. We are going to be rotating the order of the individuals that are coming up to the microphones, so that there is no advantage or disadvantage being the first person up, the second person up, and, and all that. So, we're going to be rotating the, the candidates, rotating the questions. At the end of the process, the town clerk will hand out ballots to all the council members. We will then tally up the results of, of their voting, and this evening, council will take an action to appoint a person to fill the vacant seat on council. That will not be formalized until that person is sworn in at our next council meeting, which is scheduled January 26. And so with that, if you're ready, council, we will go ahead and start.
Okay, candidate number one, or number one, I should say, on this is Jody. You want to come up to the microphone, and I think Marty has the first question.
How do you do? Is there anything council needs to know that may compromise or disqualify you as a candidate? Do you foresee any potential conflict of interest between your personal activities and those duties as a council member? And if you need me to repeat it, I will.
Okay. Mayor and council, I do not see anything that would be a conflict of interest, so I appreciate you asking, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Next one, I think, is Gary, number two. Good to see you all, appreciate that.
So, Mayor?
Hello there.
Hi.
I have the second question, and it's a two-parter. Are there any programs or services that you feel the town should offer? How would you suggest funding this service or program? Or which other program or service would you eliminate in order to fund it?
Well, you know, it's a difficult question to answer, because I don't have the information, but I feel that we have to look at budgets, we have to look at our circumstances, and how to make that decision, which, as a team, you make it together.
Good, thank you, Gary, appreciate it. Okay, next one is Don.
Good evening, Don.
Mayor, Council?
How are you?
Oh, okay.
Okay, my question tonight. Council members periodically travel to attend obligatory meetings and/or conferences that range from one to four days in length, some that start early morning. As a council member, would you be able to routinely represent the town by attending these and other functions?
Oh, of course, yes, sir, I would. I'd have to rearrange my schedule with my dogs, but I think I'd be fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Next is Linda Bear, I'm sorry, Linda. Sorry, getting mixed up here. Okay, my question to you, Linda, Linda, is, Town of Prescott Valley has used a three-pronged approach to economic development, utilizing the Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation Incorporated for the recruitment of commercial and industrial business to the, the Town of Prescott Valley for retail, business development, and the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce for business expansion and retention. In your opinion, how successful has this been, and what would you recommend to improve our ability to enhance our economic development success? Linda?
Well, first, let me say thank you for giving me the opportunity to come back and speak again.
Can I pull the mic up just a little closer?
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to come back and speak again. Yes, I do not have any concerns or issues with the program, or the way the town council and the town have been moving out. I do believe that we can bring in some outside services and some outside third parties that could provide us with additional information and help us to enhance the direction that we're going.
Good, thank you, Linda. Next is Jody. Mary?
The town's overall water resource plan includes the importation of water from the Big Chino Ranch. Please share with us your thoughts on this plan.
It did look at the general plan in regards to water, and there's so many different types of recharge, et cetera, affluent. So I like the plan. I think partnering with Prescott on that is really important, especially the length that we have to go to be able to pump that in. I think moving forward in that regard is on target. I like that we do have upwards of, we can, it's, I think, 100,000 in population that we can serve. And certainly, as we look at the housing developments that come in, we've already got that in place to service that. Council member Laura Lee is right on with that. And I think it's important to let our citizens know, there's nothing to fear. We've planned well, and we're going to continue to plan well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Next, Gary, Mike?
Thank you.
Okay, I have a two-part question as well, and everybody will, will be answering this just as the other questions, I think. The Town of Prescott Valley is governed through a mayor and council town manager form of government, pretty common, I think, throughout the state. This means that the council's role is to establish broad policy with implementation accomplished through the town manager and staff. So question one is, what do you see as your role when it comes to interactions with town staff? And then number two would be, and I can repeat it after your first question, how would you forward concerns from citizens or special interest groups to address their issues? So again, number one is, what do you see as your role when it comes to interactions with town staff?
Well, my interaction would be to, to communication is, I think, is the most important thing, and to take and study the issues and bring them forward, but to work with the staff.
Okay, and then second question is, how would you forward concerns from citizens or special interest groups to address their issue?
How would I address the issue?
How would you forward that to, from your citizens to the council or to the town? What methods would you use to communicate those concerns or issues or information you receive from special interest groups?
Well, I would take it before the council, and, and, and question the situation, and what their desires are, the communication.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Don. Next one is Linda, and it'd be Marty.
Good evening. Is there anything council needs to...
Is there anything council needs to know that may compromise or disqualify you as a candidate? Do you foresee any potential conflict of interest between your personal activities and those duties as a council member?
No, I do not, and I'm very much looking forward to helping the council, and whether it's in the capacity of a council member, or on a committee, or in however way that I can help our town grow and succeed.
Good, thank you, Linda. Next is Gary, Jody, and that would be Laura.
Yes, and a reminder, this is a two-part. Are there any programs or services that you feel the town should offer? How would you suggest funding this service or program? Or which other program or service would you eliminate in order to fund it?
Well, of course, I'm gonna go for the Arts and Culture Commission. I think, oh my gosh, arts and culture makes such a difference for our community. And so, I think that the potential of bringing in maybe some kind of summer event over a period of time where people come in, there are user fees for it, that would fund it. On the other side, I look at the opportunity in housing. We've seen an increase in the rents that have gone up, and it tells me one thing, that there's potentially a lack of housing, or it could be just that the economy's increasing. I'm interested as well in what we can do for maybe where the gap is. Potentially, there is a program through, I believe it's the USDA, and it has to do with groups that are maybe minority, it could be minority populations, it could be underserved populations, but I think there's a potential there. And then, also looking at that maybe in the tier-one area, so that we can do more infill with that. So, going with grants on that, I think, is a way to go as well. I would, I would be interested in that. Okay.
Good, thank you, Jody. Next would be Gary, and that'd be Vice Mayor.
Good exercise.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to get this out the best I can. This is not an easy question to give or to receive an answer from, so bear with me. Council members periodically travel to attend obligatory meetings and/or conferences that range from one to four days in length, some that start early morning. As a council member, would you be able to routinely represent the town by attending these and other functions?
I won't have a problem with that for several reasons. Number one, I have a good technician, a good manager of my business, which I've taken three weeks off in the last six months, and she's done a terrific job. I'm debt-free, except for a mortgage on a house. My business is debt-free, so I'm free to basically do whatever is required to do, but I can do that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next is Don. Don, and that would be my question. Don, the Town of Prescott Valley has used a three-pronged approach to economic development, utilizing the Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation Incorporated for the recruitment of commercial and industrial business, the Town of Prescott Valley for retail business development, and the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce for business expansion and retention. In your opinion, how successful has this been, and what would you recommend to improve our ability to enhance our economic development success?
It's been very successful, I think. Witnessed by all the retail outlets we have here. As far as getting it more successful, maybe we get Amazon to come up here and put a big warehouse. That would be kinda nice, but who knows, you know? But it's very successful. You guys should be proud of yourselves for doing what you've done.
Good, thank you, Don. Next is Linda, and that'd be Mary.
The town's overall water resource plan includes the importation of water from the Big Chino Ranch. Please share with us your thoughts on this plan.
I don't have a background to really respond to that question. I am very in awe of Councilwoman Nye's background in water. What I would do for questions relating to water issues would be to rely on my background in having worked with a water rights attorney, and to rely on my background in real estate development, to know the individuals to reach out to who could provide me information to help me make a constructive decision, and to provide additional information to council. As a part of the Citizens Academy, we have an opportunity to, we were suggested to have an opportunity to go out and do a field trip to the Big Chino Water Plant, and that's something that I do want to do even to get out there on my own. So, I'm sorry, I can't give you a better answer on that one, but it's not about knowing everything, it's about knowing where to go find the answers and to come back with the information to make the correct decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next would be Jody, and that would be Mike.
Okay, two-part question again. The Town of Prescott Valley is governed through a mayor and council town manager form of government. This means that the council's role is to establish broad policy with implementation accomplished through the town manager. So, the first question, what do you see is your role when it comes to interactions with town staff?
Well, certainly, we, as council, have four employees, and that's in the town management. I would have to go through town management to work in that regard, and certainly, I would come over and visit with Larry, or email, whatever's the best protocol to work with that, and anything that would come in from citizens, I could go through that regard. Now, as far as working directly with the employees, that's not how it's set up. Certainly, when I need to be able to get information, I can work with management and engage the staff. In fact, I have checked with our department heads, each of them, in regards to what's going on, the landscape, opportunities, and any hot items. And so, in that regard, when we come to council, we have to know what's going on. So, I would work with them through management to be able to get the information so that I come prepared, I know what's going on, and can make informed choices as a team member, as a leader. Thank you.
Okay. Second question.
Okay, sorry.
One or two. I'm not gonna let you off that easy. Okay. How would you forward concerns from citizens or special interest groups to address their issue?
Well, I would go through town management, and so, I'll work it through that way. I wouldn't go directly, certainly, we want to make sure everyone is in the loop, communication, but that's easy enough to do with the technology that we have, but work through town management first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Next is Gary, and that'd be Marty?
Hi, Marty.
How do you do? Okay, now you've heard it twice, but I'll say it again.
Okay, if you wish, desire to, go ahead.
It's a two-part. Okay, is there anything council needs to know that may compromise or disqualify you as a candidate? Do you foresee any potential conflict of interest between your personal activities and those duties as a council member?
I find no conflict.
Thank you. Don, and that would be Laura?
Don, it is a two-part question. Are there any programs or services that you feel the town should offer? How would you suggest funding this service or program? Or which other program or service would you eliminate in order to fund it?
Right now, as I look at it, I think our services are great. I don't, I hate to defund something to fund something else unless there is something pertinent that has to come up. We're in good shape. I'd like to keep us in good shape. Funding, I'd just love to see this, our reserves build up a little bit higher than they are now, but that's not a service, that's a mind thing where it says, okay, guys, we're good to go here. Okay?
Thank you, Don. Next is Linda, and that would be Rick?
We're about halfway through this.
Okay, let's get to the easy questions.
Okay. Council members periodically travel to attend obligatory meetings and/or conferences that range from one to four days in length, some that start early morning. As a council member, would you be able to routinely represent the town by attending these and other functions?
Yes, I've been very blessed not to have to work for the last couple of years, and I'm sure my husband would be very happy to have me out the door for a few days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jody, and that would be myself. Jody, you're up. The Town of Prescott Valley has used a three-pronged approach to economic development, utilizing the Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation Incorporated for the recruit of commercial and industrial business, the Town of Prescott Valley for retail business development, and the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce for business enhancement and retention. In your opinion, how successful has this been, and what would you recommend to improve our ability to enhance our economic development success?
In any organization, it is important to be nimble. I find that in my own organization as well. We have restructured to do that. We've done that here in the town, and what we're looking at is having those three-pronged effect is that we're not providing overlap of services. I think that's important as we move forward. I think what we do need to be careful, as we work regionally as well, is to make sure that we don't step on each other's toes, step on top of each other. But I think what we're doing is important, and it is successful. Thank you.
Good answer. Thank you, Jody. Appreciate that. Next would be Gary, and that would be Mary.
Okay, Gary. The town's overall water resource plan includes the importation of water from the Big Chino Ranch. Please share with us your thoughts on this plan.
Well, first of all, I don't have enough information to answer that question intelligently, but I agree with Laura, Councilwoman Laura, that I've had people say that, 'cause I said on the planning commission, "Where are you gonna get all this water?" I said, "I know we have a supply for at least 100 years." So, that's all I know. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and next is Don, and that would be Mike.
Two questions in one, I guess you could consider it that way. The Town of Prescott Valley is governed through a mayor and council town manager form of government. This means that the council's role is to establish broad policy with implementation accomplished through the town manager. First question, one or two, what do you see is your role when it comes to interactions with town staff?
The town staff, the town staff, we don't know everything, none of us do. The town staff is there to advise us. They're the experts, we aren't. So, I would go to the town staff only, not only, but always if I have something to ask these folks, to help us out, to figure out what, what are we doing? What is the specific issue is what I would do with the town staff.
Okay, and then, the second question, how would you forward concerns from citizens or special interest groups to address their issue?
Special interest, first, you gotta listen very carefully to these folks, okay? And then, you evaluate. Then, you pick out, I don't know if I would necessarily burden the town manager with something, I would, might go to you, because you might have dealt with something, I might go to you. I, I don't want to burden the management down if we can figure this thing out before it gets too far out of hand, or what they want to say. Maybe we can give them a good answer before we have to get too involved in this. That's how I'd handle that.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don. Next would be Linda, and that would be Marty.
I'm sorry, I was taking notes. Okay. Again, this is basically two questions, just rolled into one, sort of. Is there anything council needs to know that may compromise or disqualify you as a candidate? Second part is, do you foresee any potential conflict of interest between your personal activities and those duties as a council member?
I believe I was already asked that question.
You was already asked that.
And I haven't changed my mind.
Actually, it would, it would be Laura Lee?
Yes.
Okay, we'll ask, move it over to Laura Lee.
All right. I have two parts. Are there any programs or services that you feel the town should offer? Obviously implying that we don't currently have. How would you suggest funding this service or program? Or which other program or service would you eliminate in order to fund it?
This would not specifically be a program, but one of the things that I mentioned last week was my background in increasing volunteerism and doing community outreach and enhancing public education. One of the things that makes Prescott Valley so great is we are an award-winning city, and we are a city that operates at a level of excellence that allows us to set the standard for other small towns and cities. And we do that with only 50% of the staffing of typical towns of our size. That means we're very dependent upon volunteerism. And one of the things that I would like to see us take a look at, and that would be my personal contribution to council if I were selected this evening, is working on increasing volunteerism. And we wouldn't do that by looking at Volunteer Central and saying, "We have 300-plus volunteers, and we would like to have 1,000 volunteers." Because when you increase the number of volunteers, you're increasing the burden on existing staff, and you're also creating the potential future need for having to hire a part-time person to help coordinate and oversee all those volunteers. And what I would really like to see the town council do is create a, is to bring together churches, nonprofit organizations, charities, parachurch organizations, and bring them unto one umbrella that provides a volunteer basis for the entire town to benefit from. An example of this would be just yesterday, there was an article in the Prescott Valley Tribune, and they were writing of the St. Luke's Episcopal Church Outreach Program that they do each Christmas, and to make sure that everyone has a place for Christmas, not to be alone. The article states that they utilized 278 volunteers to make that program come together. That's almost as many volunteers utilized by one church community outreach effort as we have in the entire Volunteer Central program. Imagine what we could accomplish if we reached out and created a coalition of bringing all of these various volunteer pools together, because we live in a great, great town, and we have great citizens that are willing to volunteer. And that's just what I'd like to see, and that's what I'd like to focus on, because all of the candidates that are speaking tonight and coming before council have incredible qualifications. They're bringing specializations in the area of transit, or transportation, in finance, in planning and zoning. And what I am hoping that town council will do tonight is to take a look at the unique opportunity you have in this two-year window to fill this other council seat, and to look outside the box of the typical platform of a person who wants to serve on town council. Because I'm not coming to serve to fix something that's broken, I'm coming to serve to enhance what's already in place. And that's a program or a plan that I would like to see us take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next would be Jody, and that would be Rick.
Okay.
Council members periodically travel to attend obligatory meetings and/or conferences that range from one to four days in length, some that start early morning. As a council member, would you be able to routinely represent the town by attending these and other functions?
Did you say a purgatory meeting?
Sometimes it seems that way.
Well, you know, I've attended a lot Well, you know, I've attended a lot of those as well. In fact, that almost seems like daily life for me in government. I'm used to that. Used to team meetings, traveling. In fact, I rise, my poor husband, I get up at 4:00 a.m. and the lights go on. The day starts early, and the day ends long. I'm used to that. But oftentimes, what I've learned is sometimes we travel together to these meetings. And that's a good thing because that gives me an opportunity to learn. I would look forward to that. As far as the obligation, I've already visited with my boss and my boss's boss. I've talked about this opportunity. They were so gracious and so supportive and went above and beyond for me. So I know that I have their support. I have flexibility. And with the tenure that I have at this point with A.D.O.T., I have a lot of vacation that I can use. I also know in working in council, we have some members that work and some that are retired so that they cover different things. So in that regard, looking at what the delegation of duties is, is important. And I'm willing to assist with that. I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I hope that you would humbly accept me. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Next is Gary, and that's my question. Question number three, it is, Town of Prescott Valley has used a three-pronged approach to the economic development, utilizing the Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation Incorporated for the development, recruitment of commercial and industrial business, the Town of Prescott Valley for retail business development, and the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce for business expansion and retention. In your opinion, how successful has this been? And B, what would you recommend to improve the ability to enhance our economic development success?
Well, I'll tell you, I think we're doing really great with all the businesses in town, especially the chamber. We've got one of the best chambers in the community. Not only that, I've seen a lot of growth. And when my wife was alive, every time we'd go to a restaurant in town, they said, "Do you know about Prescott Valley?" I'm telling you, she was an advocate for this town. And she taught me a lot in that area. And we have, matter of fact, we've gone to Prescott and visited a business, trying to bring them here to Prescott Valley. And we've hooked them up with the economic development director at that time. That's about two years ago. Yes, I think we're doing a great job. And with my business experience, I think it can be an asset. But I think we're doing a great job. I really do.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, it's Don, you're up. And I was told by town manager that I missed you one time, so you're going to get a double shot. First of all, it would be Marty, and the second will be Mary. Marty?
Hey, Don. Is there anything council needs to know that may compromise or disqualify you as a candidate? Do you foresee any potential conflict of interest between your personal activities and those duties as a council member?
No, not really. I do a lot of volunteer work. I just, that's the great part of being a good volunteer, acceptable volunteer. I don't know if that good, but you can rearrange your schedule pretty easy. So I would have no issue there.
Mary?
Okay, it's water. The town's overall water resource plan includes the importation of water from the Big Chino Ranch. Please share with us your thoughts on this plan.
Well, it's a good, it's a good plan. As I understand, because of the growth curve was not quite as significant as we thought it would be, we can not slow down on it, but it's a lower priority. It's still there. It's a priority. But the thing now to, I was told that you dig down 30 feet and you get water out to Chino. That's super. And we're going to need it. And the big thing we need to do now is start getting this pipeline easement, the pipeline right-of-ways. We need to work on it. But again, we've got good water here. We really do. You're right, Laura Lee. We do. But we still need to work on that. We still need to get that water here. Maybe not as urgently as it was, but we definitely need to get it.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, last, Linda, and that would be Mike.
Okay, two-part question. Town of Prescott Valley is governed through the mayor and council manager form of government. This means the council's role is to establish broad policy and implementation is accomplished through the town manager. What do you see as your role when it comes to interactions with town staff?
I am an obsessive-compulsive, I will admit it. I walk around with a pad and a pen in my purse. And I would be, I would be fielding questions not only from the town, but from other businesses. And one of the things that I would do simply from an organizational standpoint is, at the end of each month, type up a list of all the questions and concerns and the comments that I receive throughout the month and share them with the appropriate department. And I believe that Mr. Tarkowski would also become my new best friend because I have never met anyone who has a better handle on every aspect of every department of everything that is going on in this town. And he would be an awesome resource as well as able to provide direction on how to interact with the other departments. Because I am big on communication. Because one of the things I said last week is, you have to understand that every decision that's made is going to impact another department. And so there is great importance in keeping that communication open between all of the departments.
Okay, and the second part is, how would you forward concerns from citizens or special interest groups to address their issues?
Yeah, I think I answered the question in reverse order because that goes to being obsessive-compulsive, carrying around that notepad and creating that monthly list and distributing it between departments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I think now comes a really a tough decision. There's two of us that originally, you know, the first time we were in council, we were appointed. The rest of the council has been entirely elected. And this is a tough one. Believe me, we've got four super candidates. And I think Linda is going to pass out some paper for us to vote on. But my gosh, what a jobs. I wish all, I wish all four of you were in the council. Okay, then we're going to move on to the last item on this. And that's consideration of appointing a council member to fill the council vacancy with a term expiring in 2018. And that's going to be in process. Larry, do you have any comments?
I didn't know. I've passed out the ballot for all of you to mark. We'll come and collect those and then tabulate those and go from there.
I think this is the hardest decision, very tough decision. Because I don't care what we do, we're going to wish we could have appointed the other three as well. Are you going to collect them, Larry, or Diane? I think we're ready. She's going through the heavy-duty math here and... And your pad back, Larry?
Yes.
How did that work for you?
I think that worked out real good. Good job. Before Linda gives us the results, would any of the council members have a comment? Mary?
I just, this has been very hard. And I just appreciate everybody that has taken the opportunity, all the people that were here last week, and then of course, and of course, the four of you. And I just love, I just love our country because these are the things that we get to do. And I just love it. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate all four candidates here tonight. And I know you've taken a lot of time to consider your role as part of this council. And we appreciate that, your commitment, your education, your background, and your willingness, really, to put yourself out there. So we do appreciate it. And don't forget, you know, this is a very short-term appointment. And there will be, you know, other opportunities in the future. So this may be the beginning of other things for you. So thank you again for your commitment.
Marty?
Yeah, I also want to thank all four candidates. As a town, I think we are extremely blessed to have had so many people put their name in the ring. And the four of you came out on top for this round. Only one of you will be selected. And I hope the other three, I know some of you are already participating in the town. And I hope the other three don't give up and, you know, stay as informed as you are and stay active in the community. I think it's great for all of us that that will happen. So again, thanks for your participation in reaching this level.
Laura?
It's so, words are so inadequate. I want to thank you for making this so blooming hard. To have this level of commitment and quality and dedication is such a comfort and such a blessing to this community. And I want you to understand this. There are no losers today, not one. I personally am very comforted that all of you are so willing to give of yourself. I just hope that you understand just how much you are going to be giving. It's more than you realize. Humblest of appreciation and respect, I send to each of you.
Rick?
You know, I really thought that by the time I retired from the Army, I had seen and done pretty much everything that I was going to do in my life. But the first time I stood up there like the four of you did tonight after I had applied for an opening on the town council was the hardest thing I've ever done in my life. It was all I could do to keep my knees from buckling on me. And I didn't get selected that night. Someone that did a better job than me got selected. They made the right choice, by the way. But she, she did a much better job than I would have done. But a few years later, I had the opportunity, unfortunately, to have the chance to apply again. And I did that. And that time I was selected. Since then, I've run for two elections. But I guess the thing I'm trying to say is, don't give up if you're not selected tonight. Because like Laura Lee said, like everyone has said up here, there certainly are no losers out here tonight. The decision I made just now was the hardest, one of the hardest decisions I've made on this council. I won't say it is the hardest, but it's one of the hardest. You all did a fine job. You all certainly, any one of you could certainly do this job as well as I can. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much for your effort. And thank you very much for your willingness to be part of this, this service to the Town of Prescott Valley. Thank you.
In one way, I'm kind of glad this is hard to do. It just shows what we have before us, any of our people. And I have to admit, as mayor, probably the luckiest mayor in the state, working with this, this great council, having an outstanding staff. I've been to meetings across the state, talked to many different mayors. And believe me, when I come back, I am just very proud and happy. This has to be the best community in the state. I'm lucky that I'm working with the best council in the state. And I think I can say the most outstanding staff. And I think we can compliment our town manager and the staff for a super job. It's kind of interesting when I look at it. Our fourth floor is an example. If somebody comes up there a little bit on edge, our Pam and Leah, by the time, 30 seconds after they get up there and they're visiting with these two ladies, they're smiling. And that's true throughout the staff. When I was first sworn in in 2004, the second time around for me, the, every day from 8:00 to 5:00, there were people in front of, in front of me at my desk with some issue and some concern, some bellyache they were trying to talk about. All of a sudden, it ended. That lasted several months, but it ended. And today, if there's two or three a month, that would be all. And that's a tribute to our good council. It's a tribute to our great staff and a tribute to the super community that we live in. And believe me, I don't know if anybody appreciates it more than I do. I know the council does. It's just been an experience I think that every mayor should have. And I want to thank the community, and I want to thank you people for it. Diane, do you have any answer for us?
I do, Mayor. After tallying the votes from your council, we have figured out that it would appear that Ms. Jody Rooney has gleaned the majority of the votes cast by the council.
Okay, it's a very difficult decision. Believe me, all of you were equally super. Jody, congratulations. This is going to be a great experience. Do we have to do a motion on this, or?
Mayor?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to appoint Jody Rooney as a council member to fill the council vacancy with a term expiring in 2018 by electronic and voice vote.
And Mayor, I'd like to second that.
Okay, with a motion and a second, will you set the vote, Diane?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Mayor?
That is unanimous. And believe me, every one of you got a unanimous vote, so. Thank you, Jody. Congratulations.
And also, Mayor, if I may, I'd like to invite Ms. Rooney up to the desk to join us now.
And by the way, you won't be sworn in until January 26th. You may be sworn out before that. The, tomorrow night is our first event. And if you'd like, you're sure welcome to join us at these events. Okay, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor. Or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on future agenda. Any comments? Mike, where are you? No comment tonight? Oh, boy. How about you, Kirk? Anyone else? Anyone else?
Jan.
If there is no comments, then we'll move on to number 11. Motion to convene into executive session in order to conduct the annual review and evaluation and performance of the town manager Larry Tarkowski. The executive session is scheduled pursuant to Arizona revised statutes, section 38-431A3, A3A, rather, and 1, which allows for a discussion and consideration of employment, assignment, or appointment of a public officer, appointee, or employee. Can I get a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion, convene an executive session in order to conduct the annual review and evaluation of the performance of the town manager Larry Tarkowski. I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Thank you, that's unanimous.
Unanimous. Okay, we're going to recess for a little bit here, and then we're going to executive session. Thank you all for coming. Gary, Linda, Don, thank you so much.